Just FYI, everybody, at 5:25, we will be live on YouTube. At 5:25, we'll be live on YouTube. Thank you. We'll be going live in about five minutes. For those of you just joining, we're going to be going live in five minutes, just FYI. We'll be going live in one minute. We'll be going live in one minute on YouTube, just FYI.
Hello? Yes, Mr. Martinez, how are you?
Okay, I just asked Charlie to unmute us and we're about to start, Mayor.
Okay.
And we are live.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. It's 5:30. I'm calling this meeting to order and I'm going to ask Ms. Carrillo to go ahead and establish quorum, please, for the record.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was waiting to get unmuted. And everybody, I'm calling to establish quorum, Dr. Armando Caña.
Present, ma'am.
Mayor pro tem, Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Councilman Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Nori Garza. Councilman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we do have a quorum. We've got three council members and yourself on Zoom.
Thank you, Ms. Carrillo. I will call for invocation and the pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask Mr. Randy Pettis to lead us in this items.
Yes, good afternoon. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Randy.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for joining. I would ask that you please join me in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the great gifts you had given us this past year. Thank you for the love of family, friends, and the shelter you have provided for us, as most importantly, your constant care. Please continue to protect us all and grant us peace in our homes and community during the holidays. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag. To the republic. Which stands. One nation. Under God. In the visual. Where liberty and justice.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Pettis. Now I'll call for item number one in presentation and I'm going to ask Mr. Benson, you have the floor, sir. Again, the chair is recognizing Mr. Benson. You have the floor, Mr. Benson.
Charlie, can you please.
Good, thank you. Anna. Well, anyway, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I'd just like to take this opportunity to introduce you to prospective Eagle Scout candidate, Fairland Strupe. She's with Boy Scout Trip 272 of Charlotte, Texas. Of my some sixteen years as Parks and Recreation employee of one capacity or another, and eighteen years as Boy Scout leader at one level or another, I've had opportunity to work with many Eagle Scout projects. I've seen some pretty creative projects through the years, but none as well presented and well thought out as Fairland's project. When she first came to me with an idea, it was not just an idea, but it's a pretty well-composed and well-designed plan of a prayer labyrinth that she'd like to build at one of her parks. At that time, she was wanting to build it over at Banworth Park, and when she walked in and started showing it to me, I about fell out of my chair. Mind you, as Parks Director, many Scouts come to me looking for ideas for them to do their project, but not Fairland. She came to me with an engineered plan of a prayer labyrinth that she would like to build at Banworth Park. But, you know, we talked about it and due to the amount of varied activities that take place at Banworth, I didn't think this would be an appropriate spot. As we discussed the pros and cons of several parks, we felt the best location for her project would be at Oakley Park. After all, its mission's oldest park and it just happens to be right across the street from St. Paul's Church. Virtually all Eagle Scout projects that I've worked with, I've either had the coach scout or coached the parent all the way through this project, through their projects. Not this one, though. No matter what question I presented Fairland, she had an answer. No matter what construction type of equation I presented, she had a figure. No matter what possible problem I presented, she had a solution. But before I introduce you to Fairland, I'd like to invite you all out to the south side of Oakley Park, but not just to visit and look at Fairland's prayer labyrinth, but also find some quiet time for yourself and your Creator. Without further to do, I'd like to introduce you to seventeen-year-old Eagle Scout candidate, Fairland Strupe, and she's on the other scene, so if you can. Do you have her? Okay, go ahead.
So, like Mr. Benson said, my name is Fairland Strupe, and this is my project. My inspiration for my project was our current situation. 2020 has been a real test of our patience, our faith, and how well we can work together as a community. And we saw our leaders trying to help us, the citizens, and all of our essential employees to heal our communities so we could go back to the way things were. I knew that I had to help. And through my project details, as you walk to the center of the labyrinth, you release all of your stress, all of your worries that you have. So when you get to the center, you can let go. And you can pray and meditate, rest for the whole period to fill you, or you can just take some quiet time there to really think. And as you walk out, at each turn, you cover yourself with a piece of God's armor. My planning and preparation, I researched and met with Mr. Benson and his team to discuss plans and collected materials and supplies from our donors and began to clear the area for our project. When we started building, it was officially on November 21st. We had all the supplies in hand so that we could begin, and we started with laying the lawn edging and spreading decomposed granite and compost. November 22nd, we finally secured all of our lawn edging with screws and finished with as much granite and compost as we could. On November 23rd, we placed in most of the lawn, screwed it and stayed. We put in more decomposed granite and stained the bench materials. On November 24th, we added more granite and we leveled everything. And I get, I talked to Mr. Benson for a final consultation, and we decided where we're going to dig the holes for the benches. On November 25th, we planted and watered the dwarf yopons, and we started installing our benches. On November 26th, it's truly a day of Thanksgiving. We finished installing the benches and finalized everything. A big thanks to the irrigation team and the purpley team who went out there. Again, a big thanks to the purpley team and the irrigation. And the other credit to employees building supply in Mission, Mr. Nori and Lander's, EBW Landscapes, Donna Minkin, and of course, Mission Parks and Recreation Department, Brad Benson and his team, the men volunteers from Scout, the state trip 272, and my tireless devotion and support of.
He was a lot easier.
Anyway, with that, I'd just like to personally thank Fairland and her family. You know, the different projects that I've worked on, I've always had to tell the parents to hush up, this is a Scouts project. But, you know, I kind of laughed all the way through because Fairland and Thane wanted to say something, but I looked at them, and they kept their cool pretty much all the way through. This project is entirely Fairland's project, and I really do thank her because I'm very, very proud of Fairland. But thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. I actually, I speak, listen, I want to thank her also on behalf of all the citizens of Mission for the serenity. Thank you, Mr. Benson. I actually speak this, and I want to thank her also on behalf of all the citizens of Mission for the serenity in our city that she has taken up and has designed and planned and developed. Again, Mr., thank you for the family. Thank you for Mr. Benson. Awesome.
Thank you.
I will call for presentation number two. It was a proclamation. Ms. Carrillo, you have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'd like to let you all know that Councilwoman Garza joined the meeting at about five thirty-two, so we've got a full quorum. And also for this proclamation, we have Elaine Hernandez with us on Zoom. She was very instrumental in giving us this proclamation, which reads as follows. Whereas the Rotary Club of Mission Texas was founded on the twenty-seventh day of October, twenty-twenty, and is celebrating its charter inauguration in the city of Mission. Whereas Rotary originally began as a Rotary International Youth Program founded in nineteen sixty-eight at the Charlotte North Rotary Club in Charlotte, North Carolina, and has grown into a major organization of over ten thousand nine hundred and four clubs spread around the world and over two hundred and three thousand members. Whereas Rotary stands for Rotary in Action, although the name originally comes from a combination of Rotary and interact, it is a service, leadership, professional, and community service organization for young men and women between the ages eighteen and over. Whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. Whereas the Rotary Club of Mission Texas and its sponsoring club, the Rotary Club of Mission Texas, work side by side to take action through service. Whereas the Rotary Club of Mission is a community-based and cause-based charter committed to advancing the inclusion and full participation of individuals with disabilities. Whereas the Rotary Club of Mission convenes people with and without disabilities to exchange ideas with leaders in the community, develop leadership and professional skills, and have fun through service. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, call upon all citizens of Mission to recognize and celebrate the inauguration of the Community-Based Rotary Club of Mission Texas with the installation of the Rotary Peace Pole at Mission Historical Museum and congratulate our Rotary actors for their service above self commitment to our residents, proclaimed on this the fourteenth day of December, two thousand twenty. I move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Motion has been recognized and second, and this I open up for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries a resolution. The proclamation passes five votes. Ms. Hernandez, do you have the floor, ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor O'Caña and City Council. Everyone that is on the Zoom call today, I'd like to recognize the President of the Rotary Club, Stephanie Picasso, who is also present today, and the members of this dynamic new Rotary Club. They will be working hand in hand with the Rotary Club of Mission to provide additional services in the community. So we thank you tonight indeed for this honor and for this presentation. Thank you.
Is there any of you members that want to say a word or two, Ms. Hernandez?
Stephanie, would you like to say a few words, and Ricky Ricard Rendon?
Oh, there. Hello, everyone. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you very much for signing the proclamation and as well. We will have our inauguration celebration on December twenty-second at six-thirty through Zoom as well. So everyone, if you are, you know, have the time and want to join us, and as Ms. Elaine mentioned, we will be working side by side with the Rotary Club of Mission. So we're very excited for this new club and for all the things that we want to contribute to our city of Mission. So thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you once again, City Council, for this honor. I also want to thank the Mission Historical Museum for agreeing to house the peace pole. We look forward to coordinating that installation this week. So, Mayor, we'll be extending that invitation. Hopefully, you can join us in installing that peace pole at the Mission Historical Museum. So thank you all, and thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you for your service. Thank you for, you know, being part of the city of Mission, and especially the clients that you all serve, you know, are definitely going to be, they're gonna have a better life based on you all's work and efforts and time, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much. I'm moving right along. I need to call for presentation number three, and I'm gonna ask for either Lerma or Designey to take this item.
Yes, sir. Joanne will be presenting this item on behalf of Ms. Lerma.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis.
Yes, good afternoon, and Mayor and council members. I would like to take this time to thank everyone for responding to the census as it is required to do every ten years. The Census Bureau is now in the post-field operations phase, which basically means that they are tabulating and verifying the final results of the twenty-twenty census. Continue to process data to make sure that everyone is counted once, only once, and in the right place. Due to the pandemic, the target date to deliver population estimates to the state president is now June twenty-first instead of December thirty-first. However, this is subject to change due to the pandemic and the new administration. That is the information that I have to date. I don't know if you have any questions?
I will open up to the council to see if any of the council members has any questions. Joanne, I don't, I do not have any questions. Thank you for that information. And the council, any questions?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
No question for me.
Ms. Ortega?
No, Mayor, no question. Thank you, Joanne.
Ms. Garza?
No, Mayor, I have no questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. And then I'll move right along and go to presentation number four, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Enrique, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Can anyone, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
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 So great things happening at the chamber. So we do have some activities that we're planning for, and one of the signature events that is underway on the planning is the Winter Texan Driving Concert, and it's dated for February eleventh. Typically, we always roll out a tourism Mission t-shirt. So if you remember, in the previous years, we had La Lomita, and then we had Tom Landry, and so we still have those for sale at the Chamber, our visitor center. But this year's t-shirt is gonna be focused on equal tourism. I know that that's one of our goals for tourism this year. It was mentioned at our annual meeting by our chairman and board of directors. So we're excited about it, and I'm gonna let you guys know what it's gonna be. So it's on tourism, and it's on La Monarca. So we're excited. We're gonna start pre-sale hopefully in January, and then, of course, continue on from there. We're also planning our next Buenas tardes luncheon, and it's tentatively dated for February fourth because we did have to push it back from January twentieth due to the presidential inauguration happening at Washington. So because it's a legislative Buenas tardes luncheon, we're moving it to February fourth. So we're excited. We're confirming our speakers. They can share with us their, you know, the happenings and what to look forward to this next year as far as business and economy. So we're excited about that. We also have a ribbon cutting happening this Wednesday at Gold's Gym here in Mission. So I know that I reached out, Mayor and Randy will be joining us, which we're so excited. They're very excited. They came by to our drive-through member appreciation already event last week. So we're looking forward to this good ribbon cutting. Everything's gonna be CDC following. That's one of our goals this year, that we're gonna execute CDC social distancing safe, soft programming as we can. So join us if you can. It's gonna be mainly for the ceremony and the memory of their milestone here in Mission. And as far as tourism efforts, tomorrow at seven, happening at the Mission Event Center, we're gonna be streaming Facebook Live. We are doing an official tree lighting ceremony with the Mexican consulate, and of course, our mayor will be there. So it'll be a very small, short presentation, talking about, you know, what this means. You know, the importance of our being connected with our sisters here, our sister cities, and so we're excited about it. So that's happening tomorrow, and it will be streamed Facebook Live. And that's all we have going on, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Enrique. I'll open it up for the council to see if they have any questions for the chamber.
I don't have no questions. Thank you, Mayor.
No question for me.
Thank you, Brenda. I know you and your staff probably have to drum up some ideas of how to make new things happen, so thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Garza?
I have no questions, and thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm gonna call, yes, I'll be calling for item number five, which is the departmental reports. Mr. Pettis, you in council, here's a time to ask any questions, any of the items that were in your packet.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
And it's in reference to the Boys and Girls Club report.
Okay, go ahead.
There was, there's some, some training was mentioned, and it was only for full-time employees. So I'm wondering if the part-time employees are not, if they don't, basically, why they're not being trained as well in whatever the full-time employees are getting trained? Is it a matter of budget, or is it another issue?
I will refer that to the manager, Pettis. Randy, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, ma'am, Mayor. As far as the training, there is training for part-timers that is available. In this particular report, it was reported for the full-time, but we definitely do have, because a majority of our employees at the Boys and Girls Club are part-time, so we definitely do have that training available, and, you know, we'll follow up to make sure that we're updated on the trainings for the part-time as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions by any other councils? The chair will entertain a motion to approve the departmental report just presented. We have a motion, and we have a second, and this I open up for the final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Departmental reports are approved, five vote, and I'm gonna call for item number six, sales tax report. Ms. Vela, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I will go over a sales tax revenue report for the fiscal year. To begin with, I want to show you the sales tax report. These are the figures for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, which is October twenty nineteen through September thirtieth, twenty twenty. As you can see, the city's total share of taxes that we received this fiscal year was twelve point eight million, and out of that twelve point eight million, four point two million was transferred to M E D C funds, which is a total of seventeen point one million. Comparing this to prior years, we can see that this is a seventeen point one million total that we received this year. Last year, we received sixteen point nine million, which is a total of one point zero five percent increase for the entire year. In this schedule, we see the different percentages from month to month, how it varied compared to the previous year, and this is the monetary value that made up that percentage indifference. So for the total year, we actually received six hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars more than we did in prior year. Very good. Thank you. In this schedule, you kind of see a trend from two thousand eight to the current year. As you can see, in two thousand eight, we were close to ten million, and then right around twenty fourteen, we went up to close to twelve million, and now we're close to thirteen million. So we have seen an increasing trend over the past years. And what we do as well is we provide this city, this kind of like across-the-city report. We get this information from the State Comptroller's website just to show how we compare with regards to other Valley Cities. As you can see, we were at one point five percent increase. Brownsville was at two point four percent. Edinburgh was at three point sixty-nine. Harlingen was at point zero nine. McAllen was at less three point forty-one percent. Mercedes was less sixteen point eighty-nine percent. Far was two point thirty-one percent, and Wesaco was five point thirteen percent. And on the bottom here, we just have major cities across the state of Texas, just to see, you know, where they're at as well. And finally, I just wanted to show you, we did get October's numbers this month, and so for the month of October, for this new fiscal year, we were actually already up three point zero four percent for the first month in sales tax figures. So we do anticipate, you know, to continue seeing a trend, maybe not as high, but we have been pretty stable with our sales tax. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions, council?
No questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vela.
The platform, Mr. Vela?
No questions, Mayor. Thank you.
No questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vela, also for this fine report.
You're welcome.
I will call for citizens' participation, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Carrillo, is there anybody that has signed in, either in person or electronically?
No, Mayor, I did not have anybody sign in, and I don't see anybody on Zoom either that's requesting to speak at this time.
Charlie, can you verify the electronic?
Yeah, yeah, so I don't see anybody raising their hand or anything. I don't see anybody notify me.
Okay, thank you. As a result, I will not call, I will move forward with the next agenda item. I do want to confirm, Mr. Pettis, that we do not have any public hearing and planning and zoning recommendations.
That's correct, sir.
Then I'm gonna call for the consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entirety for a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session on any item, whether or not such item is posted as an executive session item at any time during the meeting when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act. At this time, I am calling for the consent agenda item number eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, which will be resolution seventeen oh two, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Council, it's at at your discretion.
Mayor, I would like to move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number ten.
Mayor, I would like to pull item number thirteen, just for clarification. If you could add that to your motion, Ruben.
Okay.
Item ten and thirteen.
And can we do twenty?
Yes, you can do twenty.
Ten, thirteen, and twenty. 10, 13, and 20?
10, 13, and 20, right?
Yes, mayor.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for, to approve of the others?
I make the motion, ma'am.
We have a motion to approve, uh, eight, nine, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
For the second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Item number 10, board appointments is on the floor. Mr. Plata, you have the floor.
Yes, mayor. On that one, I know when you were first elected, you wanted us to work as, um, as a team and go over some of these appointments. Um, is that a way we can have a meeting to go over some of this ones?
We.
I, I would, yes, I, I also have some questions, ma'am. I, I saw the, 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 you know, the backup information. And there's quite a few people that are being, um, uh, replaced. So my question is, were these people, uh, they were, were they contacted? And they decided not to serve another term or, you know, that, that's my question. And, and also I, I would like to see if we could have a, uh, made a, a short meeting in reference to this and have, uh, uh, applications on hand, cause there wasn't any applications, um, attached to the, to the package.
Okay. Uh, basically what, what I can tell you is that a lot of the replacements that I, that I'm replacing, that are new, new coming in, uh, keep in mind, remember, one of the things that, if you, if you remember which, which, uh, that, that I told you that I did not want for the same person to serve in multiple, in multiple committees, you know, in multiple boards. You know, so, 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 uh, the last year, we, I tried to fill a, as many as I could, but because of lack of, remember, we, we advertised, we advertised for additional board, board, uh, applications. And we did, we didn't get them, so I didn't make the, the, the changes. I just left the, the people that were there. But this year, we had more applications. Ms. Carrillo, uh, every, every board appointment that we have, we have an application to file. Am I correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a good thing, uh, that we do have, uh, uh, applications. But I would have liked to have reviewed them, um, as well, just, you know, because like Ruben said, you, you did say that when you first, uh, took office, that you were gonna include the whole council in board, board appointments.
Yes. And, and, uh, and, and I will, I will, uh, provide that, you know, but, uh, but when do you wanna meet?
Uh, well, my understanding is that we have, uh, till the end of the month, which, and I'm available whenever. I don't know about the rest of the council.
Yeah, I'm, I'm available. I'm not. Except.
I'm available as well.
Okay. So let me, let me, let me, let me check my sched, let me check my schedule and check with Anna and then we'll, we'll, we'll set up a meeting, okay?
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, but if, if specifically you want, uh, a particular board, so we won't have to do, do all the boards. You know, if you want this particularly board that you're interested in, email me to mayor@missionTexas.us.
I, I really, Mary, if, if at all possible?
I just don't need, I just don't need the, don't, don't tell me the, the, the person you wanna recommend. I just need to know the board so we can have everything there for you.
Yes, and I, I would like to see, I know that, that, you know, the, the board members, the ones that, that didn't come up for, for reappointment, didn't, didn't, uh, we didn't see that. I'd like to see those members as well, so that we know that we're, we're confident that there's a balance in, in, in the board, in their particular committee. So I'd like to see the current members and the members that are, that are being, uh, either reappointed or, or replaced.
Yes.
On, on all the boards, ma'am. I'm sorry. I wasn't clear.
Okay. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Carrillo, you have it noted?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I do.
Mayor, so we'll take no action on number 10, ma'am.
Yeah, we'll take no action on, on item number 10.
Um, Gus and Anna, I just have a question real quick, just for clarification. I do know that in the past, we, we, we had a, a meeting, uh, it was kind of like a workshop to discuss who was coming up and all of us discussed it. But, uh, is it, is it a mayor appointment or is it a city council? Uh, how does that work? When people go, they apply with Miss Anna? And is there various Miss Anna? I guess my question is, is there a lot of applicants to choose from for these boards?
Uh, no, ma'am. We don't have, uh, a lot of applications. We did receive a good handful, maybe about 10 of them. Um, but I, I, I do have, you know, all of that list and everything is, is, um, you know, it's a recommendation by the mayor and, uh, by the council also needs to approve by approval of the council.
That's correct.
On all, on all boards, uh, like some of our advisory boards, um, the appointment can only come whenever the term expires. We can't, uh, discuss the whole board as a, as a group.
You can if, uh, in fact, you can replace a member of any advisory committee if they have, uh, if they failed in their task to appear. Uh, say like, you know, a lot of them have bylaws to where if you miss three meetings in a row, then you're subject to be replaced.
Yes, uh, that's a good point, Gus. I also wanted to see their attendance records.
Right.
Yes. Thank you, Gus. Thank you, Miss Anna.
I will prepare all of that, uh, that document for, for the council.
Thank you.
Uh, because of the expected, expected, uh, details that you're asking for, uh, it may take a little, a little longer. So let's make plans that we take care of business, uh, so we can get the, 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 all, all the boards appointed and, and, and move forward with the, with the board appointments, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, item number 13. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor, ma'am, on, on the resolution.
Yes.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, can you see me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, cause, uh, I, I'm having, I'm having technical difficulties over here, so I guess.
I was having, I was having the same thing, uh, but, but you, you pop up and pop, pop out, uh,
Okay.
in my screen, you know, so, yeah, I can hear you, I can see you.
Okay, I may have to log out and just, uh, come back in, in a little bit as soon as this item is over, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, this is a, one of the waterline exit agreements that we get, that we've been getting, uh, regarding our ETJ. It's a back.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
It's in our ETJ. And, uh, we'd have to approve it and also was the recommendation of then putting in other hydrants or? Other? Gus, Suzie's on, uh.
Okay, Suzie.
Uh, ma'am, uh, ma'am, can I just ask my question real quick? Just, just so that it can be answered.
Go ahead.
So I, I, I read the, the, uh, um, the resolution. But I, it's not clear on to, as far as what our responsibility is, uh, in this agreement. So that's the only thing that I wanted to clarify. What is our responsibility? For this?
We would need to verify that it's within our ETJ and if it is in fact, then we would have to implement the counter recommendations on fire hydrants or, uh, other type of fire suppression.
It would just be the maintenance.
And, and, and as far as the, as far as the maintenance is concerned, would?
No, no, the maintenance is not our responsibility per se. In, in fact, if it's, if it's within, uh, I believe this one would be altered. Suzie, am I correct?
It's in the county. It would be the county. Yes.
Yes.
So Suzie, would we be responsible for the maintenance of these, these, uh, uh, fire hydrants or fire stations? I mean, water stations?
That is determined by the fire department.
Our fire department?
Yes. Yes, it would be.
Well, I would just, I, 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 I mean, I would think that we would have that in the resolution already so that it's clear to, 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 um, to everyone that, you know, what, whose responsibility is, is, is what? I mean, that's just my opinion.
My, my understanding, my understanding that our planning and zoning rules, uh, uh, that, that apply to the ETJ, uh, as far as maintenance, whoever, whoever is taking care of the maintenance of the water, in this case, it would be Sherland Water, that they would be the one responsible for the, for the fire connection. It's called a fire connection.
The fire connection.
Yes, it's called a fire connection. It's not a hydrant. It is.
Yeah, it, it's a filling station. It's like a filling station.
Yes.
Yes. But, ma'am, my understanding is that Sherland Water doesn't wanna do the maintenance on the fires, on the filling station.
They don't.
So I, uh, they don't, right? So I just wanna be clear on, on, on our responsibility and liability.
Okay, so let's, let's table, let's table this item, because I think, I think we need to set up, Randy, we need to set up a meeting with them. Yeah, because I, I can tell you, I can tell you that, that if, 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 if it applies to this, this resolution, the upcoming, upcoming subdivisions that we, that we have, that, that it needs to be extremely clear who's gonna be maintaining it. Because I know we, we're, I, we can't send our city staff outside the city limits to do maintenance and repair. You know, unless we have an inner local agreement or, or we have a legal, legal authorization to be out there, you know, so.
Mayor, the attorney for, for Sherland.
I would recommend, uh, one of the council members to, 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 uh, motion for a, for a table of this item.
Well, so, ma'am, I agree with you.
We, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and, and, uh, and, uh, the table is, is, uh, not, item number 13. Resolution number 1702 will be tabled, uh, uh, until further notice and, um, and it was five oh, okay? Uh, item number 20, uh, Mr. Plata, uh,
On that one, ma'am, just to verify that everything remains the same, correct?
Yes, and, and it's only for six months, Mr. Plata. Uh, the, the, the reason why it's on the agenda is because the last time we gave him a six-month contract, we've already paid him six checks. You know, and, and it's the will of the council to continue six more months. That's what, that's how we set it up. If you remember when we talked to, when, when, when we talked to. Now, if the council so wishes to extend it more than six months, that's up to the council. I'm, I'm just, I'm just putting it the way, the way it was discussed before.
Okay, thank you. I don't have a problem, so I don't know.
You want, you want? Uh, I will entertain your motion to approve, uh, item number two. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 20 is approved, five oh. And I'm calling for, for item number 21, approval and authorization. And Mr. Peters, you have the floor.
I guess, uh, good afternoon, uh, Mayor Council. Item 21 is a discussion of possible action on modifying COVID-19 city mission guidelines. Uh, this is, uh, the opportunity for the city council to make any modifications, uh, to the city, uh, city's existing, uh, guidelines. And, um, if, if you all recall, we, we did implement at last, uh, this last meeting, we implemented the self-reporting for travel, uh, for all our employees. Uh, we have been receiving those, which is very instrumental as, as we, uh, you know, we're still in challenging times and, and we are receiving, uh, positive cases throughout our, our city departments. And so we do have the, the protocols in place, um, as, as we are getting those positives. However, uh, we are making, uh, the employees aware of their travels and, and the different, uh, locations of, of travel that might, may require, uh, quarantine. Now, another thing that, that we're, um, wanting to implement, uh, is, uh, we, we've, we've talked about it among staff, is, is the actual flex scheduling, um, and the, so, basically separation of, of employees. Uh, today was a, a, an example of that is that, um, you know, we had, we had, uh, an, an apartment that, that, uh, about five or six employees were sent home because of a possible exposure. And so, uh, we're, we're looking at, at going, uh, back to where we were in, um, in the beginnings of Aprils and May, uh, where we did have flex scheduling for some employees. Uh, we did have the capability of remotely working. Uh, and so that is, uh, something that we're working on as far as a plan. Uh, looking at implementing flex scheduling and also, uh, remote work if necessary. And that's, that's what I have so far, sir.
Thank you. Council, do you have any modifications you all wanna recommend?
Mayor, can, can, uh, we, uh, uh, go over the, the travel restrictions so that everyone is clear, uh, please?
Okay. Uh, Randy, you wanna present?
Yes, um, and, no, I mean, if you're, uh, you have it, uh, your file with you. Um, so the travel, the travel, uh, it, it's not necessarily a restriction. It's a self-reporting. So basically, we have requirements that, that may, uh, result in, in, um, in a self-quarantine, yeah, for, for some particular travel. The, the requirements for, for that self-reporting is that, um, one, if you're traveling into, uh, in international travel, that's beyond the 30 miles, uh, from, from the Mexico area, uh, border, um, that may require, um, self-quarantine. So if we travel past the 30 miles, Monterrey, uh,
Is that, is that, is that depend, Randy, is it? Randy, so is that depending on what, what your destination was?
Yes, correct.
In Mexico?
Yes, correct.
So basically, there was a hot, then you need to, to quarantine?
It, it, depending on, depending on, um, on the area. I'm sorry.
I didn't say anything.
Okay, so, 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 yes, uh, so we're, we're including, um, the Reynosa, all the border areas. So that's why we, we took a 30-mile, um, past the, the, the Mexico border to include Progreso and Reynosa. That would be, um, you know, acceptable. Uh, anything past the 30-mile, um, uh, range would may require the, uh, the self-quarantine. Now, another one is obviously, uh, if you're, if you take a cruise, uh, that also may be subject to a quarantine. Um, the other one is if you're traveling by pub, public transportation. Uh, for example, if you're going, traveling to bus, uh, by bus, plane, uh, train, uh, public transportation, that may require as well, uh, self-quarantine. And then also, um, if you're traveling, uh, to, uh, an area, um, that is considered, uh, you, not necessarily a hotspot, but that, that area that you, you self-disclose that you traveled to that area, uh, that may be subject to quarantine. Now, uh, the, we do have exceptions. Of course, if you travel on your own vehicle, uh, with your family and you travel, uh, independently, uh, that is, uh, acceptable. Uh, so it's not necessarily a restriction, but those are the requirements that may be subject to self-quarantine. So basically, we're just asking the employees to submit a self, just, uh, self-travel, uh, self-reporting form. So that way, we're aware where their travels are, um, based on, on, on their, their future plans.
Okay, uh, I have a question, Randy. Uh, so if, if someone travels, one of our employees travels to a, um, destination that when they get back, they are gonna need to be quarantined and they don't have the, they don't have sick leave and they're out of the, the 80 hours that were allowable, what happens then? And they, and it's a requirement through, to quarantine?
So, so, uh, if it's a requirement to quarantine, they don't have any other additional time that they have access to? So they, they will be, uh, using their, uh, their own time. That is, that is something that, um, is, is, we're, we're asking them to, not necessarily restrict travel, but to be cautious of the areas of travel.
So then they would need to use their sick leave?
Uh, yes, sick leave, sick leave or, and/or vacation, yes. Either time that they have. You know, it's, it's whatever time they have available.
Okay. Okay.
So, this is assuming that the 80 hours are not extended for next year, starting January, because those emergency sick leaves are up until December 31st. But Department of Labor might extend or consider that, you know, additional 80 hours. And at that point, we would renew those 80 hours.
Okay. And I know that we had a concern about, you know, possible exposure or exposure. I am, my- ease not to come back to place as well?
I'm sorry, ma'am, you cut off for a portion of that question.
Yeah. Just, I'm questioning the intent to test negative before coming to work, if there's a possible exposure or an exposure.
Yeah, so, we are, that is a requirement that we have. Also, it's either a negative result or a doctor's release.
Okay. Okay. All right, I just wanted to get that clarified, Randy.
Yes, thank you.
I think also-
Ma'am, the important, the important part, if I may real quick, is the reporting. You need to self-report if you do travel. Not self-reporting upon a travel such as this, that could be disciplinary.
Mayor, if I could make a comment?
Go ahead, ma'am, you have the floor.
I think that right now, with it being such scary times, I think that flu season is here and so is sinus and colds. I think that when an employee enters the building, I know that we have a staff member that's making sure that we check employees. I think a very valuable question to ask if they do feel ill, I think that they should go to the doctor and get checked. Because a lot of times with, you know, you get paranoid with thinking that you got exposed to COVID when it may just be sinus or cold or a flu. And I think employees may be a lot more comfortable knowing that that employee is getting, taking the medicine that they should be and all of that. So, I think that that's maybe, I don't know the questions that you all ask specifically, but I know when I go to DHR with my daughter the other day, they asked certain questions that had never been asked before. And so, I think that that also may play a role in the employees. A lot of them maybe don't want to miss work because they may not have days or they've already used days. So, I just want to make sure that we're targeting all those scenarios.
Yes, we will do that. And the employee does have the opportunity, if they are, you know, they are exposed. If it's a work-related exposure, that it's covered under workers' comp. But if they, we do give the opportunity to the employee also to request hours through our sick leave pool and our employees donate into that pool to be able to cover their hours as well.
Any other question, but any other council member?
Mayor, are we going to put in our, in this go-around requirement for our first responders to take the vaccine once it's, you know, readily available?
Are you talking about making it mandatory? Or voluntary?
Mayor, we spoke to members of the union and you're willing to accept a mandatory requirement?
Can we go ahead and add that to today's, and just, and updates?
Mr. Perez, are you prepared to handle that policy?
I did ask Mr. Gus Martinez to look into the possibility of us making it a requirement. I am having him research to make sure that we are, we do have the capability of making it a requirement. And that is, Mr. Martinez was going to have that information available.
Mr. Martinez, you have the floor, you're ready right now?
Yes, sir. The Department of Labor mayor has authorized a mandatory requirement under certain conditions and this certainly is one of them. And plus, the union themselves are in favor of it. So, I can draft some agreement document between us and firefighters to where they can ensure the city that they will vaccinate themselves once that vaccine is made available.
But it's not just Gus, it wouldn't be just fire, it'd be police too, no?
Right. Police, police is one, is one other avenue I haven't approached. But I think I will reach out to them and see if in fact they are willing and I anticipate that they will.
I would also reach out to our private EMS also.
Yes, sir.
Because they're all in the same facility and-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I mean, we are under a disaster declaration and this vaccine is novel, of course. So, I would want something in writing from these agencies, the police, the fire, our private EMS. And I think it's doable. And we'll get that done by the end of the year before the vaccines arrive.
So, to answer your question, Ms. Gotta, yes, we can include it. You know, because I had told, I had told Randy, unless they weren't ready, that I would exclude it. But I'm, I'll allow it to come in, Ms. Gotta.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, in fact, if you want to make the motion to allow, allow the recommendations that Mr. Perez has made to include the travel and the mandatory vaccination by first responders, I will-
Mayor, this is Robert Inojosa. I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I would like to do some research on this vaccine first before we make it mandatory. There's so much we don't know about it at this point. Not that it's a bad idea, but to say that we're going to make it mandatory now, it's only for emergency use and they may not even be supposed to take it. So, I would really like to do a little bit of research before we make it mandatory.
Ms. Gotta, your take?
Can we do it subject to the, you know, Robert's research?
Well, I would rather have it subject to them signing the contract, you know?
Yeah.
And in the contract, there should be a provision of what Robert was talking about.
Okay.
And if the research, if the research indicates, if the research indicates that that is not, then we're going to direct our city attorney to come back to us and revisit with us.
Yes, okay. Well, I mean, I just want it, you know, to be as soon as possible and I don't want to, I don't want to delay it even five minutes if we don't have to.
Yes. So, you still have the floor, ma'am.
Well, I'll make that motion like you just said, Mayor.
Okay.
Did you get that or not?
And-
Yes, ma'am, I did, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
I'm going to make it subject to me doing some research on it.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, five vote. And I will move over to item number 22. And I know that, Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
I guess, good afternoon. This is, if you all recall, this is the item to be discussed regarding the Texas Fiesta events. And it was the Parade of Oranges, the Fun Fair and the Carnival. Anna, do you have that information to share?
Charlie, do you have that up?
And do we have representatives from the Texas Fiesta?
Mr. Martinez, are you on the?
We do have Lisa.
Yes, Ms. Martinez couldn't make it today. So, I will go ahead and ask her all questions. My name is Lisa and I'm the executive director for Texas Fiesta.
Is the president on, Lisa?
No, he's not.
Okay, and he authorized you to do the presentation, the board?
Yes.
Okay.
And Lisa, this is Randy. If you can explain, you know, the, you all had a meeting on Saturday and you all submitted these plans to the city. If you can explain what you all had discussed and agreed upon so the council can be aware of the plan so they can act on that based on your representation, your presentation?
Yeah, thank you. We opted to have a festival parade. And the board had looked into maybe having it at the event center. But a lot of things came up and one of the main issues was traffic control. So, the board unanimously decided that it'd be best, since we already, on a yearly basis, we also have that street, that two-mile line all the way to First Street, we opted to just go ahead and leave it there. It's a lot easier for traffic control. We can stage the floats in the center lane, have the traffic though, north and south, south and north, where they can just go around viewing the floats. The time schedule for the actual parade flow would be three to five, staging earlier that day, perhaps at 10:00 or 11:00. So, people can start arriving and stage the floats as well. So, it's a lot easier for everyone. It's a lot safer as well, like I said, for traffic control and staging for the people participating. The Fun Fair, as you can see as well on the side, we have a space available. There's ample spacer for the carnival spacing. As you also got one of the information on the carnival, the CDC guidelines that they're willing to follow. If anything else is required from them or requested, they're willing to go ahead and fulfill that as well. We would also be having the Fun Fair or plan to have a Fun Fair right next to the carnival due to the space. We can safely have it spaced out more than six feet in between and the people will have a lot of space for parking, going in and out of the area as well. That will all be taken during the 30th, which is the day of the parade, knowing that though the carnival will be there for like two weeks prior to the parade.
We don't, we don't have any problems with using the land, am I correct, Mr. Perez?
Correct.
Or is Dennis Silva on board?
Well, actually, sir, this is the Conway 495 location.
Yes.
Yes, yes, but the Conway 495 is going to be a private property, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, we, yes, it's already been cleared.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, sir.
It's still subject to a permit, Mayor, and to notice requirements for neighboring homes within certain notice ranges?
Yes.
Right. And we will go ahead and follow like we usually do on a yearly basis where we submit our application to be approved through planning and zoning permits.
I did want to point out, Mayor, that on their, their plan for the carnival, if you could pull up the letter, Charlie, it does say that they will be operating at 50% of capacity. It does say that, that they are going to sanitize each and every ride after each use and that they are providing hand-sanitizing stations throughout. But keep it in mind that it's only at 50%. So, you know, it's going to be challenging for them to sanitize every single ride, in my opinion. But I just wanted to make that point.
What I would like to point out is, Mr. Moreno also made it clear to us, they're going to minimize it, what they're doing, instead of bringing their regular 47, 48 rides, and that's including food, drugs and games, they're going to bring out only 25. And they're not going to bring down the rides, like the roller coaster where you have two on one of the little rides. They're going to bring the single rides. They will be, not the two-seaters, but the single-seaters. Every time someone gets off the ride, they will sanitize that ride and have them get on the following seat that was not used. That's the plan. It would be every other seat.
Mayor, may I ask Lisa a question?
Go ahead, ma'am, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, Lisa. Thank you for all this preparation and information. I just had one question. I know because if it's outside on the Fun Fair and on the carnival, would our community have to wear masks just walking around there or they're not required?
No, yes, ma'am. We will go ahead and place signs around the area as they go in and around the Fun Fair area and the carnival as well. We got that idea from the McAllen parade, actually. They had those signs posted everywhere where people were, you know, required to use a mask. The carnival is also, if they see that someone is going in without a mask, they will provide a mask for free.
Oh, okay, I love that idea. Okay.
Yes.
That makes it way more safer.
For the Fun Fair, I would also like to point out that we are also planning to have wash stations around the Fun Fair as well in the different areas.
Okay, so even walking around and on the ride, the mask, unless they're probably eating or something, they'll always have the mask on?
Correct. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Council, I'm looking for your direction, do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I have a quick question on the, as far as the parade is concerned.
Go ahead.
Will that be adjusted, you know, the area? Because we're looking at from First Street to Two Mile. So, right, so-
Yes, ma'am. It depends on the entries. It's going to depend on the entries. I mean, we can just, we'll start from Two Mile line, we can start closing down and it just depends on the number of entries. We usually close down for staging from Two Mile line to 495. But since we're going to do the single-stage through the middle lane, it's going to take a lot more road space to stage them on there.
Right, yeah, yeah, I know, absolutely. So, where are you going to start? Like, are you going to start on First Street and then work up or?
On Two Mile line and work south.
Oh, you're going to start on Two Mile line and work south? So, the, the, okay, so the last, basically, your last entry would be on Two Mile line, is that right?
Uh, no, that would be our first entry. I mean, we still have to work that around. We need to go out there and see how many entries we have. And if it's best for us to start maybe on 495 going south, we can do that also. It just depends on the number of entries. For example, if we were to get 30 entries, we're going to get closer to the, to the community area, which is all the business areas and so forth.
Oh, okay, so you're going to start on Two Mile line and go south from there, is that right? Did I understand that? Okay. So, it's possible, depending on the entries, that you would just go, you know, maybe a little further south in 495?
Right. If there's further entries, of course, we're going to move towards the south.
Right, right, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that, that was my, but, and when is the deadline for the entries?
We first need to get you approved in order to start deciding that as well. Everything's on hold at this time, waiting for approval.
Okay.
Lisa, what would be your normal deadline for a traditional parade?
We usually have a deadline of that week before the parade is our deadline. So, it's like on the mid-January or so. So, right now, we need to start advertising. If we are approved for the parade, the application, so they can start picking them up and we can start lining up as well, figuring out how many entries we have.
Is, is there, I'm just wondering, is there any way you could move up your deadline so that you could have a final presentation to us? I mean, when is our second meeting in? And not that it would, you know, we wouldn't say anything about yes or no at that point, just so that we're aware of what's going on. If we could move up your deadline a week, a week, so that you could have everything in place already?
I think it's going to be January 11th, am I correct, Anna?
Yes. January 11th and January 25th are our next meetings.
What I can do is I can go ahead and give you an update. At that point, if we don't have deadline, you know, the deadline is further down that day.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I think it's important for us to have an idea of what's going to transpire.
Yes, definitely. I can even give you a deadline in December. We have, you know, depending how many entries, we have a lot of people calling in already, ready to pick up applications. So, we can also do that for you in December, no problem.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move for approval?
We have a motion for approved, second? We have a motion to, for approve, second?
I'll second.
We have a second. It is open for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carries uh and we're having a parade and, and it was approved five oh.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you for your support.
Make sure you report it to your president, okay?
Sure will, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Calling for item number twenty-three, Mr. Rodriguez, you have the floor.
This is number twenty-three, can you hear me, mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening to you and, and council. Uh, number twenty-three is authorization to award contract for city of mission internet bandwidth services. Staff received seven proposals, two of which were found unresponsive or non-responsive. Grand government solution submitted an unsigned proposal and charter communication LLC did not include the general business questionnaire for the, with their proposal. The evaluation committee evaluated all responsive proposals on set criteria outlined in the request for proposals and found Smartcom Telephone LLC to offer the best value. After review, staff is seeking authorization to award contract with Smartcom Telephone LLC in the amount of eight thousand three hundred and forty dollars per year for a three-year term, and this is for one gigabit of bandwidth.
Any question, counsel? No question?
No question.
No question? We, we have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and twenty-three is approved five, five zero and moving for to, item number twenty-four. Mr. Benson, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening, mayor and city council. I have before you item number twenty-four, which is approval of work authorization number one for design, construction documents, and bidding construction administration for Lions Park renovation. This is based on seven point five percent estimated cost of the two point five million dollar project. Uh, get a lot, providing a estimated cost of contract with Archie Forum LLC is one hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Work authorization number one, consisting of eighty-three thousand dollars, eighty-three thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents for billing phase and forty-four thousand ninety dollars for supplemental and additional services on the, on design modifications. Total costs of first draw would be one hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval of work authorization number one and seeks direction for, on the supplemental and additional services cost.
Mayor, if I may, on this side.
Go ahead, Mr. Pedersen, you have the floor.
Yes, um, and so I like, as, as Brad mentioned, um, the, the, the agreed-upon contract was at seven, seven and a half percent of, of the estimated cost. Uh, and so, um, the Archie Forum is, is billing for uh a portion of that, which is eighty-three thousand four thirty-seven fifty. However, in, if you look in your packets uh on the invoice, um, they are submitting a, a redesign uh modification amount of forty-four thousand. Uh, I did meet uh with Mr. Garcia and, and I believe he's on the meeting. I did meet with Mr. Garcia regarding the, the redesign fee, um, of forty-four thousand. Um, and one of the things I, I do wanna mention to the council is that, that was discussed and was that the seven and a half percent of the design fee is already um, according to uh, according to the discussion on, on Mr. Garcia was, uh, that's already, because we've had several designs, that's already at a hundred percent per se. Um, and the, any additional redesigns uh would be additional. I, I, I didn't agree with that. Um, however, uh, because we do have some pending items to discuss regarding the design of phase one. And so wanted to make that, um, make the council aware of the additional redesign fee on top of the seven and a half percent uh that is being submitted for, for request in this particular invoice. So I, I have that information to share.
Yes.
Mayor, ma'am.
Also.
Yes, mayor, ma'am, I have a comment.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, I have, I have a concern about that, uh, about that particular invoice for the forty-four ninety. Um, only because just last week I got a phone call from, from one of the Parks and Rec members, actually the president, uh, because they had seen the design and they're wanting to make some modifications as well. So I, I feel like we're not even at, you know, maybe not even at seventy-five percent sure on the design. So there, there's gonna be more changes. So I'm concerned if we're already at a forty-four, almost, yeah, forty-four thousand dollar uh redesign fee, you know, that, that's just gonna, that's, that's gonna go up because there's, there's gonna be changes. We haven't had the uh, uh, you know, the, the uh, the professional designers on, on the uh, um, all-inclusive parks, uh, that we don't have their input as well. All we have is the, you know, just the little areas where things are gonna go in, but we don't have anything else. So I, I don't, I feel like we're not anywhere close to, to getting at a hundred percent design, in other words. So I'm concerned about the future invoice.
Well, let, let me, let me just throw in on, on, on defense of the architect and I'll let, I'll, I'll let the architect speak in a minute. Uh, the question is, uh, the, how, what, what was the first, uh, the, the scope of work? How many, how many corrections, how many decide corrections? What, what, what was part of the preliminary package? You know, because uh, keep in mind, we have been changing the design practically every, every time that we meet, every single time. So at, at what point, at, at what point do we get at a hundred percent uh, uh, design, you know? So, so Mr. Garcia, you have the floor, sir.
You're on mute, Charlie.
Are they muted?
Okay, there you go. Sorry, Bob. Can I answer, well, guess to answer your question, at what point does this design, does the design uh stop? Well, that's, that's, you know, up to, up to you guys, uh, like Mrs. Garza mentioned. Uh, you know, um, I will say that we do already have, uh, in coordination with Mrs. Bassina, as, as was directed to coordinate with her. So we, we have her, her uh, her design pretty well uh established and we're working with her to make sure her design is working with the, the rest of the park. Uh, and, and uh, making sure her uh services to her areas are coordinated. Um, this, this was uh, this invoice was just my first, uh, you know, attempt to try to wrap my head, my head around what the city council has asked me to do. And uh, you know, it's, I understand it's up for discussion here. And uh, all I'm charging for really is just the hours that, that we put in on, on the, uh, what we think are the extra. And, and I think there's a supplemental uh informational sheet there with you guys. Um, as far as like what uh, what we, costs are gonna be incurred for future design changes, um, you know, I, I think that's negotiable between us. Uh, I just, you know, wanted to capture some of the cost to pay for some of the employees and some of the work that we've done. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, Charlie, uh, would you be okay if we, if, I mean, I would, I would be very comfortable with approving the eighty-three thousand and then, and then discussing the forty-four uh at a later date, if that's even possible? I don't know.
Uh, well, sure, I mean, I, I'll take that. I mean, considering that request, sure, uh, that's, that's, that's fine. I would like to get, you know, some uh payment, of course, per.
And we would get it, we would do this as ASAP, cause, you know, we know that, that, uh, you know, you need to be paid for your service. But uh, um, if you'll just give us a little more time to, to look at it, would that be okay too, Randy?
Yes, absolutely, ma'am. And I, and I was gonna uh present an option to have a workshop uh Friday if, if everyone's available. Uh, so, uh, so you all can look at the latest design that Mr. Garcia presented to me on Friday of last week when we were discussing this. Uh, if, if the mayor and the council are, are available, we can have a, a workshop uh to go over the, the latest uh design. And I believe it's, it's, it's beneficial for not only Charlie, but for all of us to move forward with the project, uh, to, to advance on this.
Can we have the Parks and Rec board there and of course Brad?
Uh, the answer to your question, ma'am, is yes, uh, provided that we, that we post because they, they also, they're also subject to, to quorum the way we are. You know, so we would direct Ms. Carrillo to both, both, both us and the board with possible quorum and, and, and discussion and possible action on the, on the, and, and I don't know if you wanna call it a workshop or do you really wanna call it a special meeting so we can be able to take action on it?
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I like, I like your recommendation, mayor, to make it a special meeting.
Yeah.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, so I haven't officially seen your contract, Charlie, good evening. Um, I, I am, I am leery of the costs because of course this is gonna be a huge project for the city mission and all of us have a huge heart in it. And I know that there's a lot of opinions. So I foresee there's gonna be several changes coming up uh the road here because when you involve more people, more people have input. And surely we want um everybody's input in this park and we want it done right correctly. So um, I will be getting with Gus so that we can maybe review that because in this, I, I understand that you're billing per hour, but since it's first of a kind like this, an, an all-inclusive park, I think that we need to maybe discuss that, how much is the hourly rate and how many more hours you're gonna put into it? Because I foresee that, that it's gonna be quite a bit before we really decide on what it's gonna be. And that's all. I mean, I know you're doing a terrific job. I just, uh, we just wanna make sure, I guess, that it's a cost saving for the city also.
Sure, I understand. And, and I'm more than willing to be flexible with the, your suggestions from the city. So sure, yeah, let's.
Uh, I'll open it up for Mr. Plata and Mr. Vela if you, so you can, uh, what, what is your take on this?
No, we just need to be careful with the spending, with the disinvestment. But I'm looking forward to start, to break, break ground as soon as possible. I think it's just, we have spent several hours and Charlie, I understand you gotta get paid for the number of hours that you have invested in this project. But um, I mean, we just gotta review every single number.
So you're okay, you're okay, Mr. Plata, with the eighty-three thousand to pay right now and, and negotiate the forty-four thousand with the architect? Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Vela?
I'm also okay with the eighty-three thousand and I negotiate with the other one.
And, and Charlie, you're okay with that for right now?
Sure, yes. And, and I just wanna make clear, you know, the, the percentages we're charging is not just for me. I have a whole team under me, uh, you know, structural engineers and civil engineers that are reviewing what we're proposing, the restroom buildings, plumbing design, mechanical design, electrical design. So uh, that's the consideration for that percentage of the fee. It's, you know, it's not, I don't want the misunderstanding. I think it's just a, you know, one man team and it's never been that. Uh, there, there's, there's a team behind the.
Yes, and, and, and there has been multiple, uh, multiple changes, you know? If you look at the number of times that we've met, you know, that it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's been, it's been happening and, and like Mr. Ortega said, it's gonna continue to happen and until we get to a hundred percent. You know, at one point or another, you know, the council, I'm gonna, we're gonna have to decide and say hasta aquí, you know, so we can move forward to, to the construction level like Mr. Plata said, so we can start uh moving some dirt, you know, some dirt and getting this thing uh, uh, to rotation, you know? So I will entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, move to uh, uh, pay the eighty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents as billed by uh, uh, our architect for the Lions Park renovation and to uh, discuss at a later date, I think Friday, uh, the additional forty-four thousand ninety.
Yes, uh, your motion has been recognized. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh.
Charlie, I'll call you tomorrow.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
And we're moving to the next one, which is item number twenty-five. And, and, and we're asking Chief Sanchez, uh, you will have resolution seventeen zero three. Chief, you have the floor.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Item twenty-five, approval of resolution seventeen zero three, authorization to enter into a master lease purchase agreement with PNC Equipment Finance for the purchase of fire apparatus and designate the mayor and this, or the city manager as a authorized representative. The lease agreement will be for ten years to include a ten-year maintenance agreement. The option to purchase will be offered after ten years. The first pace uh payment will be made in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Staff and city manager recommend approval. This matter before you.
Counsel?
I move for approval, mayor.
Yeah, motion, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries the resolution seventeen zero three, item number twenty-five, has been approved and I'm calling for item number twenty-six. And, and Chief, you have the floor.
Item twenty-six, authorization to, to lease the purchase of a fire apparatus from Sydney Martin's Emergency Group LLC via buyboard contract five seven one dash one eight, utilizing a leasing agreement between PNC Equipment Group LLC, a third-party leasing company. The total uh purchase uh cost is seven hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents via buyboard contract five seven zero one eight. Correction, five seven one dash one eight. The first uh payment will be made in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in the amount of seventy-five thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Yeah, open up for discussion by the council.
Make a motion to approve, mayor.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item passive five oh. And I'm calling for item number twenty-seven, uh, Chief Sanchez.
If I may, mayor, before we go to item twenty-seven, can we clarify the resolution number for item twenty-five?
Item twenty-five is seventeen zero three, sir.
Seventeen zero three, is that correct?
We, we tabled, uh, we tabled resolution seventeen oh two.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah. Unless, unless there's a legal, legal reason why.
No, 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 I just, I was counting uh two oh two, but we did table that resolution, so it'll still take effect the next time we address it.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Chief Sanchez, you have the floor.
Item twenty-seven, authorization to purchase daily uniforms items uh through a co-op vendor from GT Distributors L, Inc. A buyboard contract five eight seven dash one nine in the amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand. Staff and city manager recommend approval. This matter for you.
Yes.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number twenty-seven is approved five oh and I'm calling for item number twenty-eight. And Ms. Silver, uh, Mr. Silva, you have the floor.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Item twenty-eight is seeking authorization to engage the most qualified engineering firm for Sherry Village Industrial Park roadway and drainage improvement submission and infrastructure. We received thirteen uh firm applications. Three firms were found unresponsive for failure to submit addendums and general business questionnaires. Ten proposals were found responsive and we evaluated the firm's qualifications based on the criteria that's procured. We're engaging in accordance with federal procurement regulations circular two CFR, part two hundred point three eighteen to two hundred point three twenty. Staff and city manager recommending approval to engage in negotiations for fair and reasonable costs and authorize staff to award contract. Staff and city manager recommending approval to engage in negotiations for fair and reasonable costs and authorize staff to award contract.
I open it for discussion from the council.
Daniel, I know that we had tabled this item because we had some questions, so was all that worked out?
That was, yes, it was worked out, the questions that we had were in regards to the regulations and who could qualify as a entity to participate. And the EDA or the the federal department said that as long as it was fair and competitive, that we're okay.
Okay, and yourself and JP Terrazas and Robert Solinas were on the committee to.
That's correct.
Rate the companies, right?
That's correct, there's three of us rating the companies.
Okay, and Melden and Hun have been in business in the city of Mission for how many years?
I've been here seventeen, so I've seen them do work during that entire time.
Okay, great. I have no more questions, Mayor.
Any other council member? I will entertain a motion.
I make a mayor.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same sign. Motion carries item number twenty-eight is approved five oh and calling for item number twenty-nine, Mr. Silva, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twenty-nine is seeking authorization to work contract for grant administration services. We received two proposals, the evaluation committee reviewed and ranked both proposals for technical qualifications and price. We're asking to award or we will be awarding in accordance with federal procurement regulation circular two CFR part two hundred point three eighteen through two hundred point three twenty. Staff and city manager recommend your approval to award contract to the highest ranked.
Do we have to identify the highest rank?
I will, I will identify.
I'm asking, I'm asking council.
Yes, sir, we do.
We have to, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you identify the highest rank?
Yes, sir, we'll do, the highest ranked is the Reiner Group.
Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to go for approval.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed same sign. Motion carries and item number twenty-nine is approved. Five oh.
Mayor.
And move into item.
Mayor, I have a question real quick, just for clarification. On the, on the, on the previous.
Item number.
Item.
Number twenty-nine?
Number, no, number, number twenty-eight, did we identify the 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 entity that was?
We did, it was Melden and Hun.
Yes, yes, Ms. Ortega identified him.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that it was identified.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number thirty. And Ms. Deluna?
Susie, you're on mute. Susie, can you hear us? You're on mute.
Susie, you're unmuted, we just can't hear you.
Charlie, can you unmute ending in eighty-six seventy-one?
Okay.
I think that's, that's her landline.
They're able to unmute themselves right now. So if I can't see them, they could do that.
Can somebody call her on her mobile?
I'll call her right now.
Would you go to the next one, Mayor?
All right, I mean, I have the, I have the summary of this item while she gets on. You're muted. Okay, we'll take Randy on this. Mr. Perez, she's having trouble with her computer, if you want to proceed on this. I'll present. Yes.
You have the floor, Ms. Deluna.
Go, go ahead, we can hear you, yes.
We can hear you.
You have like an external speaker?
No, I need to dial again.
Susie, we can now hear you, you can go ahead and start, ma'am. Susie.
She can't hear us for some reason.
Welcome to.
We can proceed with Mr. Perez, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Perez, you have the floor, now I'll go for another item.
Okay.
Randy, can you hear?
Yeah, yes, we can.
Okay, number thirty is a final plat approved for Carriçales subdivision, it's a seventy-six point eighty-seven acre tract of land out of block sixteen, Texan Gardens subdivision. This is in our rural ATJ, the developer is Norberto Salinas and the engineer is South Texas Infrastructure Group. This is located near the northeast corner of Six Mile and Western Row. The developer is proposing forty-eight single-family residential lots, they're half-acre lots. Water CCN belongs to Agua. Sewer will be addressed by individual onsite septic tank. Drainage is proposed via an internal storm sewer system within it's in the streets to collect surface runoff from blocks and subdivision and streets. PNC and staff are recommending approval. This is not a public hearing, this item is not before you.
Council, I'll open it for discussion.
Mayor, I have a question. So because this is the final plat, when was it that we saw it for the preliminary?
August twenty-sixth in twenty nineteen.
Okay, and all the, all of the improvements are in place? Yes, okay. Alrighty, well then I move for approval as presented.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same sign. Motion carries item number thirty passive five oh. And calling for item number thirty-one, Ms. Vela, you have the floor.
Item number thirty-one is the acceptance of the quarterly report for. The Public Funds Investment Act, section twenty-two fifty-six point zero twenty-three of the Texas Government Code on Total Investments. For the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty. The total increases for investments was nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-six cents and total decreases were one million, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand. Leaving a total of ten million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents in outstanding investments for the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty. The total interest earned on all funds year to date was a hundred ninety-six thousand, sixty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Do you have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same sign. Motion carries five oh. And I'm calling for the next item on the agenda.
Item thirty-two is the acceptance of the monthly property tax report for the month of October twenty twenty. The twenty nineteen total adjusted tax levy. I'm sorry, the twenty twenty total adjusted tax levy for taxes was twenty-four million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. And the amount of collections as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty is two hundred and sixty-three thousand, twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents, which represents one point zero eight percent of the total twenty twenty tax levy. The total adjusted taxes levy for the delinquent taxes was two million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. And the amount of collections as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty is seventy-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents, which represents three point zero six percent of the total tax levies from previous years. Staff and city manager recommend approval. I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second, Mayor.
We hope, do we have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same sign. Motion carries item number thirty-one has been approved. Five oh and I'm calling for item number thirty-two. Ms. Vela?
That was thirty-two.
Oh, thirty-three, Mayor.
Okay, I'm calling then for item number thirty-three and and Mr. Terraz, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is JP Terraz, City Engineer for City Mission, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Item thirty-three, approval of work authorization number thirty-four with LNG engineering related to the Inspiration Road Military Parkway Loop. Professional engineering services related to the development of the right-of-way map. Surveys and PSNE for phase two of the Inspiration Road Military Parkway Loop. From US eighty-three, which is I two, south to military highway from east Schubach to FM ten sixteen, which is Conway. For a total cost of three million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I'll open it for discussion by the council.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and this, all those in favor say aye.
Mayor, I just want something, real quick, real quick, what is the funding source for this three million dollars?
That would be a text, text that project.
This is, yes, it's a local government project, but we don't get reimbursed for the design. Only for construction, right-of-way acquisitions. But not for the design.
So then this is coming from what, from which funding source?
So so this is, if you recall JP. We have approximately about twenty-five million in MPO money designated for this two, for these two highways. However, this three point seven is is not part of it, so currently right now it's it's out of operations. So the the, we will be, there is a portion that we can request some some contributions from the county. There is a portion of county road in that in that military section, however. To answer your question, ma'am, this is strictly local funds for the, for this particular part of the project, however, twenty-five million has been designated from the MPO.
Okay, I I just wanted to be clear on that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same sign. Motion carries, motion carries and and it's a five oh. So now I will call for item number thirty-four. Mr. Terraz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, item thirty-four, approval of change order number one related to the Benson Palm Phase Two project. Contractor encountered several conflicts with utility lines when installing the sewer line to the Benson Palm Park. We're nodding the plans and encounter irrigation and sprinkler systems that was not located. Contractor will replace, will replace sprinkler systems and landscape the area. Previous contract price was five hundred and forty-nine thousand with seventy-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Change order request forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Ters Board Directors approved change order number one at their board meeting on December eighth, two thousand twenty and will reimburse the city. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, I'll open it for discussion. Mr. Plata, you have the floor, you're.
No, sir.
Was it inadvertent? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same sign. Motion carries item passive five oh and we'll call for item number thirty-five, Mr. Cardoso, you have the floor, sir.
James, you're on mute, James.
We can't hear you, James. Oh, talk again? Oh, we can hear you.
Go ahead, James.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, item number thirty-five is a grant purchase authorization. The Office of Emergency Management is seeking authorization to purchase a message board from buyer's barricade from San Antonio, Texas. Buyboard number six zero eight dash two zero in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. The message board is under a state grant from the State Homeland Security Program, grant number four zero five, five eight zero one. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Open it for discussion, any of the council members?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second. Mayor, do we have a, do we have a picture of that? I don't know what a message board looks like.
So Ms. Garza, the message board are kind of like the ones that they use for the traffic control from like text up. The ones that are on wheels, it's a portable message board.
Oh, okay.
It's like a, like a walking screen.
Yeah.
It's the ones that say, you know. Left lane ahead closed or something like that.
Yes.
That is correct.
Yes, okay, okay.
Something similar to that, maybe not the exact, but similar to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same sign. Motion carries five oh. And I will, I call for item number thirty-seven, Ms. Vela, you have the floor.
Thirty-six, Mayor.
We'll call for item number thirty-six.
Yes, and item number thirty-six, Mayor and Council, is another grant purchase authorization. The Office of Emergency Management is seeking authorization to purchase a new twenty-eight foot response trailer from North Texas Trailer for Fort Worth, Texas. Buyboard number five nine nine dash one nine in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. The regional response trailer is under a state homeland security grant program under grant number four zero eight, zero one, zero one. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and this, I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed same sign. Motion carries is approved five oh.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Yes, item number thirty-seven, Ms. Vela?
Item number thirty-seven is approval of a budget amendments in the General Fund and the MDC Capital Projects Fund. In the General Fund, we have expenditures of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars for the professional services and architectural engineering services for the Mission Lions Park renovation. It was item twenty-four and I know only the one hundred and, or only the eight point, the seven point five percent got approved, so we can. If council wishes, we can change this to be the one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred only, which is the percentage from the contract. And then we also have in the MDC fund twenty-two thousand and twenty-seven dollars for capital outlay that was a carryover from the seed loan. MDC Board approved this amendment on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
Open it for discussion by the council.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed same sign. Motion carries item number thirty-seven is approved five oh and I'm calling for item number thirty-eight. Chief Dominguez, you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, item thirty-eight is authorization to purchase summer uniforms. For the Mission Police Department via state approved contract. It's a Gauls buyboard contract, five eight seven dash one nine. The lightweight breathable summer uniform is critical in hot weather conditions. This is again for the purchase of our summer uniforms. This are based on the collaborative group, this is the second year of purchase of the summer uniforms. The total expenditure is seventeen thousand, five ninety-nine oh eight. Staff and city manager recommend approval for this purchase.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same sign. Motion carries item number thirty-eight is approved five oh and move it. Motion carries, item number thirty-eight is approved five-oh, and move it to unfinished business with item number thirty-seven, thirty-nine correction. And I'm looking for council, council approval or council recommendation. Do we untable it, or do we leave it tableed? Which in two, in, in the next city council meeting, the agenda item will die? Or do we want to take action, untable it? Or untable it and retable it? Whatever the direction, I'm looking for the direction from the council.
Since we didn't have the workshop, I mean, I don't think we'll have a decision, no?
That's, that's, that's correct. That's a good point. So you want to...
Probably untable and table again, Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, I'm going to untable the item on number, on agenda item number thirty-nine.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We untable five-oh, and Mr. Plata, you have the floor.
Mayor, I'm going to table the item.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five-oh, with item number thirty-nine is tabled again, and I'm looking for direction for item number forty.
Mayor, I'm going to untable item number forty.
We have a motion on the floor to untable. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now I will open it for the council for discussion.
Mayor, I would like to, I don't know if they're going to do a presentation, but once again, I would like to recommend approval for Perez Legal Law Firm. I believe he has made it the proportion. I'm pretty sure they already have reviewed by now.
Do, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. I'll open it for discussion. One of the things that I do want to bring up, Mr. Plata, that you need to make sure that you clearly understand that Mr. Perez is ranked number three on the list, and we're, we're bypassing item number one and number, list number one and number two. And there's a possibility that legal may, 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 may have some, some problems with that, and I'm going to ask Mr. Martinez, is there any problem with that?
There's not a problem with that, Mayor, although he was initially deemed to be non-responsive, and then later on, it was probably an issue that he violated certain conditions of the proposal, but at this point, my office is not taking any action beyond what Mr. Plata and Mr. Vela want, want to do, but yes, he was, he was deemed to be responsive ultimately, and, and he ended up being ranked third amongst three.
And Mr. Martinez, clarify, if, if vendor one and vendor two request a, a hearing, they allowed to, to get a hearing while they weren't selected as the most responsible and low bid?
They're allowed to be, they're allowed to, to protest and, and say that they were disadvantaged against, and that is a possibility. I, I couldn't tell you if, if that's what they're thinking or will do, but yes, by going against the recommendation and also deeming this individual, this law firm, responsive when initially they were deemed to be non-responsive, it could possibly open up some type of, I wouldn't say litigation, but, but definitely some type of protest letter deeming that the other two law firms were disadvantaged against.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Martinez. Any other question by any of the council members? We're still in discussion.
Do, do we have a, an amount of what they're going to bill us? Or do they bill us per hour?
No, the proposal for all three is pretty much like a, it's, it's a set standard throughout the industry of bond councils. They, they basically set up, have a set fee, and then a sliver percentage of the bond that they write. It's not, it's not deviant amongst the three. It's pretty much the same.
So, as far as what it's going to cost the city of Mission, there's really no difference in the three?
Amongst the three, no. There isn't a difference in terms of cost. The only difference would be in terms of, of the, the actual qualification of the firm themselves.
And Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Gus, you were on the committee.
Correct.
What's the number one difference between one and number three?
Well, from what I saw, and I'll keep it to just general terms. The first one, tremendous resources. They are, they are international and have, have a lot of, of resources to offer the city. Their lead counsel, and this is Arnold Cantu, who submitted for, for his law firm. He's from the Valley, and, and their national office is out of, out of New York and Houston, and they have an office in San Antonio, so I just thought that they were more qualified in terms of the resource they could offer, and it just, it just the, the staff. It's, it's what they do for them.
I just want to, I mean, I had known Mr. Perez for quite some time. He's from the area, has money invested in our community, has lots of experience working with municipalities in, with bonds. I, when I read myself, our, the requirements, I mean, it was somehow contradicting. So I do not have a problem giving an opportunity to somebody from our area that I feel like I know they can do a good job. I mean, every time they request a bill or an invoice, and Norrie says, I mean, we don't, I, we don't, I don't anticipate it's been millions of dollars that we're going to pay this firm. But I mean, I think every, every time he submits a bill or something by hours, or it, it can be review at that time. But I, I feel comfortable in giving the opportunity to somebody from the area. I, I know Mr. Perez for years. He used to work with First National Bank, and he has a lot of experience dealing with municipalities. So that's why I'm making my decision based on that.
Okay, but number one is also local, Mr. Plata.
Well, the firm is from San Antonio, and this one is from the Valley.
Gus?
They, but they represent, they represent about a dozen cities and schools amongst, amongst the, in the Valley, and, and I will disclose that I know Mr. Perez and also Mr. Cantu personally, and they're both qualified attorneys. And having said that, you know, I, I chose to recommend Mr. Cantu.
Yeah, and, and my take is that I go with the recommendation also of, of, of the first one, the first one, because they're the most responsible. They were ranked number one, and it's, it's the practice that we, that we, we follow, and we, and I want to continue working with it. But, you know, that's my take as, as, as one fifth.
Yes, Mayor.
So, any other questions? I will call for a, a, a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, I'm opposed, and I don't know if anybody else is opposed.
Opposed, Mayor.
You're opposed also?
Yes.
Mr. Vela, declare.
I'm for.
For? Ms. Garcia?
I, I'm for, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Plata, obviously you, you, you're for. Am I correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Motion passes three to two. And I, I will call, I will call for the comments of the city manager, comments for the city manager. Randy, you have the floor?
Hey, can everyone hear me? It's because I couldn't unmute myself. I, I, I do want to take this opportunity, Mayor, to thank our, our Mission Fire Department, our Mission firefighters that assisted in the rescue last week. If you all recall, the four-year-old individual that fell in that well. Very, very proud of our, our fire special ops team and, and also the fire department for, for coming together as a team, and, you know, having that successful rescue, obviously a, a miracle in itself. They did assist, they were the, one of the first agencies there. And I do want to thank everyone from the, from the fire department to work as a team in, in assisting in this, in this miraculous recovery and, and rescue, so I, I, I want to thank them for that. Very proud. It, it did make national news. And we did get comments from not only CBS, but CNN and so forth, and so very, Mission was very well represented, and so I thank them for that. That's all I have for now.
And I, I, I want to let this, I, I want to echo what Mr. Perez said, but I also want to add that, that I had a personal call from the, from the county judge and the commissioners and the sheriff of Stark County. Communicating to me to let the, that, let the fire department know that they were very, very proud and, and to thank them for their service and for the saving of the life of the, of the child. So, so kudos to the Mission Fire Department as always, historically. And I like to, to brag about the fire department historically because of my personal commitment to them, to, to that department, and that is that we've always been known as, as high-rescue individuals, and we continue to know, to, to, and, and a lot of you have volunteered your time and effort in the fire department as we were growing to the, to the size of the fire department that we have now and the equipment that we have now. And, 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 and that we're very proud as far as that is concerned. On behalf of the Okanya family, we want to wish all citizens of Mission a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, you know, and, and, and be safe, and stay healthy, and be blessed. And I'll pass it over to the, to, to, to the mayor, Bo Kim. You, you have the floor, ma'am.
I have no comments, Mayor, just everybody be safe.
Yes. Ms. Garcia, you have the floor.
Mayor, no comments, just wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and a very safe holiday. Thank you.
Mr. Plata, you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor, the same here. Also, I'm very proud of our firefighters. Thank you for doing a good job. I think we have a great team, police and fire serving the citizens of Mission, and also, I mean, want to wish Mayor and the council members a Merry Christmas and a bless in a year.
Thank you, Mr. Plata.
Mayor, I have one more comment, if I may.
Let me finish with Mr. Vela, and then I'll go back and call, call your agenda item back, Mr. Perez.
I apologize, go ahead.
Okay, not a problem. Mr. Vela, you have the floor.
Just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. Mr. Perez, you have the floor. I'm calling back to your item.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I, I, I was trying to, having problems on mute myself, but we do have, I, I do want to present our new cemetery director, veteran cemetery director, Mr. Jerry Peña, who is on Zoom and, and it's recently became on, on board, and so he's hit the ground running, and, and I would like Mr. Peña just to say a few words, if, if he may.
Mr. Peña, you're recognized by the chair. You have the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Randy. I'm glad to be on board. I think there's a lot of great projects, good things coming on board, and I'm just proud to be a part of this team, and hopefully we'll hold this cemetery to a high standard, which I think will be a great reflection and a positive for, for the city. So, thank you, everybody, and I hope you have a, a great holidays. F D, great job out there, and I hope to work with you very soon, and thank you.
Welcome.
On behalf of, on behalf of the council and the mayor and the citizens of Mission, we want to open our eyes for a welcome for you, and, and thank you for stepping up to the plate for that, for our veteran cemetery. We're, we're very proud of our veterans in Mission, and we're, and we're always growing for better, better facilities and better, and better places, so. So just FYI, so we also have a, a board, a, a veterans board that consists of nine individuals that, 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 that eventually we're going to get together with you, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Any final comments, Mr. Peña?
None at all. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, Mayor, if I may. Before we go into executive session, I would ask IT Charlie or media Charlie to, to recognize Heather Scott and Bobby Guerra, and to invite them into our executive for the first item in that session.
Yes, so I have the break room ready with them in it. I see them here in the meeting, so whenever we're ready, and pay, just everybody attending the executive session, pay attention to your screens. You're going to get a, a message saying join the breakout room, so just be on the lookout for that, and that button will take you to the breakout room.
Thank you, Mr. Lombivia. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'm going to go into executive session.
Do I hear a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five-oh, and we're in executive session.
Anna, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
I'm leaving my office, so I'm gonna...
You'll probably leave the breakout room, sir.
I already did.
Yeah, I'm already closing. I'm closing the breakout room right now, so everybody's coming back momentarily.
I'm so technology savvy. There's actually only one item that we need to vote on.
That's correct. We have a, yeah, that's correct. Out of the three, one needs a...
Well, I'm getting my card, guys.
Aren't you proud of me, sir? I mean, the fridge is like five feet away, and I haven't gone to the fridge yet all night. I'm proud of myself.
Okay, Mayor, we're back. Yeah, you're on mute, sir. Okay.
Am I back already?
Yes, you are, Mayor. And we have a call, sir. I need a motion to reconvene.
More to recommend.
We have a motion to reconvene. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. And Mr. Martinez, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Regarding item forty-one point A, Stephen J. Wilson versus City Mission, this is a no action item, sir.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
Forty-one B, I need a motion to authorize the city attorney to hire outside counsel for council number C dash twenty-four eighty dash eighteen dash I as discussed in executive session.
I'm more to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item approved, four zero. And we'll go to the third one, Mr. Martinez.
Number forty-two, Mayor, is a deliberation regarding real property. This is a no action with a directive from the council to the city attorney to just reply as a courtesy to the sender of the letter.
Okay, so no action?
No action.
If no action, then I'll move over to the next agenda item, adjournment. I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'm more to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we adjourn with a vote of four zero.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Friday, Friday, nine AM. Is that okay?
And what are we going to be discussing on Friday?
It's the Lions Park.
The Lions Park. Okay. And then the following week, we'll do the appointments sometime?
It's up to you all, ma'am.
It's probably best in social meetings than a workshop.
I would wait till after the holidays because I've already made plans. I'm pretty much, I've made plans since after December the eighteenth through January the third.
I second that.
Well, and so we do have some terms expiring at the end of the month, December thirty-first, twenty, for some of those board appointments, so it would have to be prior to the end of the month.
Mayor, they can expire, Mayor, until we appoint them.
Yeah, they can expire. We just won't hold a meeting. We just won't hold a meeting at the committee.
Okay.
Unless we can get quorum without those appointments.
They'll be fine.
So, January the fourth would be great at two o'clock in the afternoon for me.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
January fourth is all right for me. I'm not going anywhere.
At what time is Friday's meeting?
Nine.
Nine AM.
Okay, I've got an hour to post in the morning. Okay.
On January the fourth, I would want it in the morning, so it's like that will give us, like I said, it may take us long, so if we could put eight-thirty with breakfast.
Oh.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Eight-thirty with breakfast.
We're gonna start the year on the good side.
Mayor, I'm gonna call in sick, but if you're having breakfast, I'm there.
I'm there.
You already said it, guys.
No New York resolution diet.